All right, go right ahead.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order. It's November 4th, 2020, 5:30 PM. Could we each of the board members introduce themselves, please? I'm John Fink, Chair.
Rick Lyles.
Sorry.
Nelson Giel.
Molly. You're muted. Okay.
Molly Friedland, alternate member.
And Patrick?
Patrick Lyons, alternate member.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I, well, next time this is called to order, okay. Anyone who's disordered can come to order. Next item of business, adoption of the minutes from October 21st. Is there a motion regarding the minutes, please?
Move to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes, by the way? In that case, all in favor, please indicate. Thank you. Okay. Now, we're on to final plan review for revision to a previously approved major subdivision.
Done.
Yes?
You got it done from the November 4th meeting.
Oh, I didn't, yes, you're right, it's right there. Okay, does anyone have a motion regarding the November 4th minute?
Move to accept.
I'll second it.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please? Now, final plan review for revision to a previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Denver Way subdivision for Jonathan Bates. Proposal is to divide an 8.5 acre parcel, tax map 58, lot 19-3, into two parcels, creating lot one, two acres, and lot two, six and a half acres. All the subject property is located in the urban zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Stephen Salisbury for the applicant.
Okay.
We'd like to divide this property and create a two acre lot around the existing nine unit apartment building. Submitted an supplemental application material to this month. Just a letter authorizing me to be agent, since you probably haven't, aren't familiar with the LLC that was created. So we have that documentation on record. And hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll be back to amend lot two again to show 15 units there. But for now, we're just dividing the lot into two parcels.
So it's simply a land subdivision?
Just a land subdivision.
Anyone have questions or comments on this?
I got a question for Stephen. There's a, the woman making sound from Matthew Seeburn is giving you authority to...
Yes, he's, Matthew is the managing partner of the LLC that was established.
Okay, I've never seen that name before, I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, no, you probably haven't, that's why I put it in.
Okay.
Anyone else? Does any member of the public wish to comment upon this matter? Carrie, do you have anyone?
I don't have any, anything.
In that case, what would the board like to do?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plan for revision to the previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Denver Way subdivision for Jonathan Bates. Proposal is to divide an 8.5 acre parcel, tax map 58, lot 19-3 into two parcels, creating lot one, two acres, and lot two, 6.5 acres. All of the subject property is located in the urban zone.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please? Okay. Next item of business.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Well, you're gonna have to have a show of hands or a verbal. Carrie's not gonna be able to see who's voting.
Oh. Aha. This was unanimous, Carrie.
Thank you.
Next, this final plan for revision to a previously approved major subdivision entitled Bridge Twin Estates Phase Two for Bridgewood LLC. The proposal is to amend the language on the subdivision plan, Plan File 44-47. Updating the fire protection from automatic residential sprinkler systems to a water supply tank and fire hydrant located on Bridge Twin Way. All the subject property is located in the rural zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Steve Salisbury for Bridge Twin.
Go ahead, please.
You just summed it up 100%. This amendment to the subdivision is only language changes, there's no changes to the road, no changes to the lots. The developer installed an underground water tank and a dry or fire hydrant for the fire department to hook to. And that is one of two options in the ordinance to address fire protection. So originally, we opted to have a restriction on the deeds that the houses be sprinkled, but since now we have a storage tank and a fire hydrant, we're gonna change that, take that option off the table and take that restriction away.
Does the fire department have any comments on this?
We have no comment, and we approve what they've done. We've actually inspected the tank when it was installed.
Okay. Do planning board members have any questions, comments?
I have one for Steve, probably not really under our purview, but, I mean, for people who've already bought a lot there and built a house that had that restriction in there that they have a sprinkler system, how does that work? I mean, do they, do all those deeds have to be changed in registry?
No, no lots in phase two have been sold.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any member of the public wish to comment upon this matter? Carrie? Do you have anyone?
Nope. Nope, all set.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plan review for revision to a previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Bridge Twin Estates Phase Two for Bridgewood LLC. The proposal is to amend the language on the subdivision plan, Plan File 44-47, updating the fire protection from automatic residential sprinkler system, the water tank and fire hydrant located on Bridge Twin Way. All the property is located in the rural zone.
Is there a second, please?
Second, couldn't have said it better myself.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, I thought you meant the word second.
That too.
Is there any discussion? In that case, did everyone who is voting yes, state your name, please? John Fink?
Rick Lyles.
Nelson Giel, yes.
Molly Friedland, yeah.
Okay. We've done that. Next is preliminary plan review for revision to a previously approved major subdivision entitled Fox Run for Homestead. Homestead Earthworks, Inc. The proposal is to divide a six and a half acre parcel, tax map 49, lot 5-1, into two lots, creating five lots consisting of 2.8 acres. Creating lot five consisting of 2.8 acres and reducing lot four to 3.7 acres. This is on Route 1A, Bangor Road. All of the subject property is located in the urban zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Steve Salisbury, representing Jason Homestead. I have presented this subdivision two other times. Originally, it was an eight lot subdivision. We came and amended the plan and combined eight lots into four lots. And now we're gonna split the previously approved lot four into two parcels, making lots four and five. So we're adding a lot to a previously approved subdivision. And this will be the first meeting of two meetings to do that. The highway department, the state highway department approved the entrance. And actually, the owners started construction on the property, if you're familiar with the location. The deed was transferred, and I believe the owner's attorney or the bank's attorney picked up on the fact that the plan needed to be amended again to add this lot. So here we are.
Questions from the board?
Steve has answered my question. I was curious about why the building was already in, under construction for the last month or so, and now, I mean, we're just coming before the board for this approval.
Yes, it's just, it's just, again, just a land subdivision in this case. And our review is always on revisions as limited to the revision proposed. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Any member of the public wish to comment upon this matter? Carrie?
No public comment.
In that case, does someone have a motion regarding this matter?
I'll move that we accept and approve the preliminary plan review for revision to a previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Fox Run for Homestead Earthworks Incorporated. The proposal to divide a 6.5 acre parcel, tax map 49, lot 5-1, into two lots, creating lot five consisting of 2.8 acres and reducing lot four to 3.7 acres, located on Route 1A, Bangor Road. All the subject property is located in the urban zone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor, please, so state. John Fink, yes?
John Belio, yes.
Rick Lyles, yes.
Nelson Giel, yes.
Molly Friedland, yes.
Okay. This is going a lot faster than I anticipated, folks. I hope you're not disappointed in this.
Not at all.
Yeah, but this is, this is your time in front of the camera.
That's okay, I spend too much time in front of the cameras.
Next item is final plan review for a major use site development entitled Ellsworth Solar Project for Ellsworth Main One LLC. The proposal is to construct 42.3 acre solar energy facility on the 107 acre parcel located on the Bucksport Road, tax map 38, lot seven and eight. All the subject property is located in the rural and drinking water zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Evening, my name is Dale Knapp. I'm the company principal with Boyle Associates. I believe my colleague Chris Byers should be on with us tonight as well.
Yes, I'm here on the upper portion of the Brady Bunch over here. We also have Greg Carey, he is on the call. He is, he works for Con Edison Development, so if we have some, you know, client related questions, we can bring in Greg. But we've been working closely with Carey since the last planning board meeting, so thanks for having us again to give you an update of where we're at.
Just to be fully open here, as a former resident of the city of New York, I am familiar with Con Edison. So neither favorably nor unfavorably at this point, because it's been a long time.
Yep.
So why don't you just run very briefly a a quick review of the project for the benefit of the public?
Sure, Chris, maybe you could tackle that, and then I could update kind of what we've done since the last planning board meeting, once you have that broader overview.
Sure, sounds good. John, I don't think you were on the last meeting, so I'll try to maybe, sorry if this is a bit repetitive, but we're proposing a ground mount solar project. And the purpose of this project is to provide ratepayers living in Maine to save money. The power will be produced in Maine, and it will stay in Maine. To date, this project has gone, undergone a tremendous amount of due diligence, both within our firm as Boyle Associates doing natural resources assessments and wildlife assessments. But we have Ian Jukes also on the line, who is our engineer representing the civil side of this. And so Ian and his team has done a ton of work on the stormwater side as well. We've done agency consultation with Maine Fish and Wildlife, Maine Natural Areas Program. And all of these different parts of due diligence have been compiled into a sit location of development act permit, which has been submitted to the DEP already. And I believe it was submitted even prior to our meeting last, last month. So right now, that's under, under review by the DEP. We also have a particular portion of this project, which we can get into. Maybe even just share my screen briefly. We've worked hard to avoid wetland impact as much as possible, but there is a small portion of this project area where the road will need to cross through a wetland. And we obtained a permit through the Army Corps of Engineers to run through this crossing. We, we do have an open box culvert that allows us to create continuity between the northern and southern portions of this wetland that we're running through. We've kind of created a little bridge over this, but we've worked with Ian and his team to make sure it's structurally sound, but also strong enough to be able to support the weight of a fully loaded fire truck. So that's something that we've been working on in the background as well with Mike. Yes, just a couple characteristics about the project. These solar panels are installed by driving piles into the ground, so they are not concreted into the ground, they're actually driven into the ground. And the, the panels themselves are all facing due south, and they do not move. So this is a fixed hill racking. We do have an access road that runs through the majority of the project with a few different T-turn turnarounds that are spec'd to the city of Ellsworth specs. And just to back out a little bit here, one of the homework items we had from last time was to provide you guys with like a zoom in on these specs to make sure that the radius is accurate and the amount of turnaround area is, is, you know, what you need for emergency vehicle access. I guess lastly, there is a fence that goes around the entire project. It will be an agricultural style fence that has wooden posts with high tensions, high strength steel that will keep wildlife out. The fence is spec'd to be eight feet tall. Not only is this a good idea for, you know, a project like this, because we want to make it secure, but it is a, we need to be code compliant, so the National Electric Code requires us to have a fence of at least seven feet tall around the perimeter of the site. A couple other things that we've added to the site plan here that were not on the plan last time. You'll see that I've got the drinking water zoning district and rural zoning district line right here, running through. You guys should also have full-size prints that we sent along to Carrie representing this, so we added that on there. We have the the note indicating that we need to have the E911 address here. There'll be some type of fixed sign that needs to be in compliance with your specs mounted at the, at the front of the road. We also, I know I'm kind of maybe dipping a bit into your presentation here, Dale, but just one of the things that came out of...
All right.
Yeah. We had a meeting with, with, I think it was with Mike, right Dale? You and, you and Mike met on site, or?
Yeah, we did, we walked the site with the fire department.
Right.
And kind of reviewed the condition of the road, and as well walked up into the center of the site. And some of the early feedback, the feedback they had for us primarily was they wanted to see a secondary gate on the Bucksport roadside of that wetland crossing. There is an existing landing area from a timber harvest on this side of that wetland crossing, and so that will remain kind of as is on the site. And so we added a gate based on their preference, so that someone wouldn't enter the site, kind of go exploring through, and then end up crossing that wetland where the road is slightly narrower to reduce the wetland impact, run and encounter that next gate and kind of, you know, back up or off the road. It's, it's wooded in there, so there's a gate in that open area prior to that wetland crossing to just reduce, you know, the chance of somebody getting themselves into trouble out there.
And so you can see here, we've got the vehicle access gate with Knox box. We will also put gate, obviously, at the fence that will also include a Knox box. So we'll just work with the fire department to make sure we get the right codes, so that they can access those boxes. I think those are the updates. I certainly don't want to walk through all the tiny details, but we did make those amendments to the plan. Nothing else changed substantially in terms of the footprint, but a lot of it was just these details that we wanted to make sure were in conformance with city standards. Any questions about the site plan or updates? It's okay if we, you know, if you want to maybe dig into the weeds a bit, there's certainly a lot to cover if you want to talk about it. You might be muted.
We, I can, I'll go ahead and start here. It was basically on October 17th that we did that site work, walk with, with Dale. And we walked all the way up to where, if you look at this set of plans, basically where that second gate is. And basically, where, where the road crosses the wetland, it narrows, I believe, to 15 feet wide. Am I correct with that?
That's correct. The road width will be 15 feet across that open box culvert.
Right, so basically, that was one of the, one of the factors that we were talking about as far as if we got that far, and we didn't need to go all the way into the array field, backing out through 15 feet through that bridge, et cetera, it was just gonna be a little difficult. So basically, we, we had another gate down, and we actually were calling that landing area like a staging area, so we don't have to send more than one vehicle up there at a time. And that kind of works out for us very well there, so. And Chris, basically, when you get a Knox box, it'll be a keyed box, there won't be any code on it. So, and we'll have a key to get into that box from there.
Yeah, I was just saying that we will, we'll make sure we get the right box that uses the code that you guys have.
Okay.
Your special code for Ellsworth, yep.
But basically, we were really impressed with the process as to how things are gonna pan out as they start the process. And they will be notifying us, basically, when they get on site. And whoever's there will be notifying the fire department in the, when they are there, so that we know somebody's up there in case we have an emergency, need to get an ambulance up there or a fire truck. So we'll know when they are up there.
Thanks, Mike. John, did you have some comments? I, I think you may have been muted earlier.
Which Johnny talking about?
Oh, John Fink, looks like John Fink was talking.
He's still muted.
Oh, wait for John, the other John has had a couple questions.
Sure.
On your Exhibit J, the operations, maintenance, and decommissioning plan, on page two, under equipment removal and site restoration, first paragraph says that underground wiring that's buried deeper than two feet will be abandoned in place. And then the second paragraph, racking posts will be removed from the ground or cut off at a depth of at least two feet below grade with remaining material left in place. I should have a good reason for that, I'm not so sure. I like that.
I can speak to the, the process of pulling these posts out of the ground. I have not been around long enough to see a project be in operation for 25 years and then be decommissioned, but I have been on site to watch piles be attempted to be driven into the ground, but maybe they put them in the wrong spot, and they say, oh, oops, we have to pull them out. Sometimes, when you pull those, or you attempt to pull those posts out, they, they will be deformed when they're below grade and therefore can't be removed. And so for the most part, that is the case, they just come right out of the ground, the same way that they went in. But that's providing just a kind of a backup plan in case they can't. It's not like all of these posts will all get cut off below grade. I think they're just trying to provide some provision for the event that if they look like a candy cane underground and they can't come out. Without also excavating, you know, an eight foot hole and creating large amounts of ground disturbance to, to excavate a, you know, an ivy below grade.
I mean, these are basically just posts, I mean, drilled into the ground, there's no concrete hole in, in place, correct?
That's right. That's why they oftentimes will come out without issue. But sometimes they'll hit a rock, maybe, you know, four feet down, and they take a weird left turn, and they're hard to pull out.
Very similar to guardrail posts, right? So sometimes they get wedged in rocks, and it is really hard to get them out.
Yeah.
But most of the time, almost all the time, they come right out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some of that, some of that exemption room is a preference of the main DEP. And so when they see these projects decommissioned, a meadow has been established over the life of the project. It's, it's sort of a natural condition, so they don't want us out there digging a 10-foot hole to get that out of the ground.
What about the, the underground wiring?
I think it's less likely that that would need to be, that exemption would need to be enacted. It's, it's pretty likely that all of the, all the conduit, they, they try to consolidate it into one sort of duct bank, where you, you know, maybe you'd have like 10 different conduits all stacked up to limit the amount of disturbance. I think that that one is a lot less likely to be where we'd be abandoning conduit underground.
In any case, John, they always pull the wire out because the wire actually has some value, right? So it would just be plastic conduit if there was something left.
If I'm not mistaken, that conduit and the wiring is not that deep, it won't be as deep as the posts that are going in the ground either.
Absolutely, yeah, no, I, I, you know, I think the conduit will need to be, yeah, a couple feet below grade.
I understand the point about the racking posts and DEP, but I mean, the language that's there, I mean, it's kind of open-ended, that, I mean, it seems like somebody can run a speed commission, go along and just cut every post off at at two feet, and leave the rest in the ground.
Well, your, your explanation made, made sense, Chris. I guess maybe if we could just get a sentence or two of that language in here, that, that might clean it up. Racking posts will be removed from the ground. Something like, if possible, or cut off at depth if necessary, or the request to DEP or something like that, basically what you just said, but...
Yeah. Yeah. I'm kind of going along with the decommissioning plan too, on Dated November 24th, the fourth bullet, is applicant to submit a performance bond, a financial Financial assurance review and approval by the city attorney prior to the issuance Of any local permits. Has this commissioning plan been submitted to? Ed Bear or, I mean, Redmond and Wintle?
Yeah, so maybe this is a good time I could provide some updates on the decommissioning plan. So the plan was approved on the 20th or reviewed by the city attorney. The surety amount would be revisited every five years and then updated as appropriate, you know, based on the cost at that time. We provided the Sort of the nice cert of materials that justify how we came up with that initial cost as requested as well. And then, you know, the decommissioning would begin Upon seizing the project beating operation is the trigger for that plan to be initiated.
Was the applicant willing to go along with Nelson's suggestion there for word, adding some wording to the decommissioning plan?
I think, I, I think that's, that's reasonable. We can just indicate, you know. I think you're asking Nelson for like an if necessary, these steps would be taken kind of language.
Yeah, I think the two points you made was one, if necessary, or two, at the request of the state at the time.
Yeah, yeah. No problem.
And let me know that in any motion to approve, though, that That statement should be in the motion. That the plan includes that language. Anyone else have anything to say?
Well, I think if we, I think if we change even that little addition to the, to the wording, I think it should re, be resubmitted to Ed Bear or just, just to cover our bases.
The applicants prepared to do that, yes? Provide Redmond and Wintle with the revised language?
It is, I don't think that that was a section that the attorney picked up on during our review. We did do a couple of back and forth red lines. So that particular section didn't See, it seemed like a challenge to them. Is, would you like us to, to provide revised language to Kerry? Is that you're saying? Picked up on earlier?
I think to Redmond and Wintle, just as a, for your information and that.
Sure.
They can ignore it if they choose. How about that?
Sure, like it just, yeah, notification of it.
Yeah.
Sure.
If they have a problem, they'll obviously say so, but I don't anticipate that.
No, I don't either. I think we had some back and forth with them and they were fairly comfortable with the final plan, you know, as we submitted it. But that's fine.
No problem, John.
Okay, good. Any other questions, comments from the board?
I just have, I would like to hear from John Whedon on, on his memo dated October 4th. And he had a couple of concerns, I'd like to Hear a little bit more about his memo.
The issues are, are really simple and just a couple of them, so I'll go with them one by one. References, what Dale just mentioned, the meadow that's going to be established over time on the project. Is a wonderful concept for the treatment of stormwater. Right now it's a forested buffer and it's been there for quite a few generations, providing very good stormwater treatment. That's going to be completely eliminated by the process of constructing this site. The meadow will be constructed probably not over generations, but instantaneously by spreading grass seed on disturbed soil. And we don't, we believe that that could produce a very wonderful meadow over time. But until that happens, we like the idea of the quarterly inspections that the Boyle Associates folks had Indicated that would be happening. We think it's a wonderful idea and if they would include a representative for the city for a while, i.e. For a few seasons until everyone is comfortable with the buffer as it is being established, that's a wonderful idea for erosion control monitoring. And the details they have in the site location and development application are very detailed and that's wonderful, but they're They're not committed to a particular contractor at this time. And inclusion of any city staff, water department code, staff, that would be a wonderful addition, you think. And regarding that, until the meadow is established, the Exhibit 12A Stormwater Management Plan dated August 12, 2020, Section 1.5 Basic Standards. States that the project will provide temporary construction and post-construction best management practices. Examples of BMPs are outlined on Sheet C5-0 and C5-1. The narrative on Sheet, Sheet 5-0 states of the Location of the siltation structures, these are to capture what erosion control doesn't catch, are shown on the site plan. And it could be my old eyes. I didn't see any temporary siltation control structures or erosion control mixed berm, which we had discussed with Boyle Associates is, is an optimal installation. Anywhere down gradient to Branch Lake from the down, from the side in the drinking water zone. And they might be there on one of the plans. I looked on the Site Location and Development Act. Plan Exhibit 14A. And I looked in the other Section 12 Stormwater Management Plan as part of the separate Packet the city received, and I didn't see it on those plans, but they may exist. The planning board may be aware of them. I, I am not.
The line essentially coincides with the, with the limit of disturbance, so they overlap on the plan. So the, the edge of our limit is where that Where that falls, we could probably provide maybe a separate figure. Kind of breaking those two apart, but essentially it would fall at our, at the limit of our activity and enclose the entirety of the site. Chris, do you have anything kicking around?
I mean, another way of thinking of the limit of disturbance is essentially kind of where the tree clearing limit is.
Collap line.
You know, and that's why it's difficult to see that, but it's That, that, those, that silt fence would remain in place until We have sufficient establishment of that conservation seed mix onsite. So we wouldn't just finish construction and rip out those controls and then say, we, we seeded it, we would need to Wait for the seed to take and actually create stabilized ground cover.
Wonderful, thank you.
Sure. No problem to include you too, John. I mean, during construction, I think that's also a good time for you guys to stop in there and just Make sure you've got access to seeing what's happening. We've got a big parking area in that big turnaround area, so feel free to drive up and take a look or notify the contractors.
Anyone else? Does any member of the public wish to comment on this matter? Kerry, do you have a crowd there?
I don't have any comments from the public.
Do you have any comments yourself?
Nope, I'm all set, but thanks for asking.
You're very welcome. So what would the board like to do at this point?
John, before, before the motion, just one more comment. Just, I think everybody's seeing this, but just want to put it out there, so we've, we've at least addressed it. The timing of this project is happening similar to one we looked at before where the decommissioning plan. We don't have it. Or the decommissioning bond, we don't have That. Or the final approval, I guess, for that In hand now, so the presumption is that will be achieved before the construction starts. And the, the notes here in the TRT say before the issuance of any local permits, so. Am I interpreting that correctly? This is following that same
Right.
Order of operations as last time.
We interpret local permits to be building permit, so the bond would be posted prior to issuance of the building permit, so that way, you know, you've got the surety in place prior to construction.
Exactly.
Okay. And I, I am curious, we, we talked about this a little bit last time, which I understand was the first time you guys had heard of it, but Maybe more for the city's part. I think there is a desire on our part. I want to speak for John D., but, but I, I think he's brought this up in the past, that Is there any way that we could have these before the final approval actually occurs? And I'm curious about the work that goes on sort of behind the scenes and if This is what we should reasonably expect going forward, or if there's something we could do differently next time in the process, where all of this is actually in hand Today, at the time that we're talking about the
I think sort of to, like, just as a, as a trend in development, that's not the way it's done. These projects follow kind of a typical sequence and a lot of that is based on state preference, state permitting and sort of who can sort of own the project process. And so usually we see it, you know, as a condition, the DEP is going to accept, expect to see it prior to construct, construction, but not prior to issuance of the permit. So the, kind of the sequence is you, you acquire your permits and then you move into your pre-construction activities where you sort of obtain, you Out of pain, you, you check those boxes, you, you prove out that you're meeting the conditions of your permit. Then you move construction. Does that make sense? Chris, do you have anything to add? Sorry.
Well, I think along with what Nelson was saying, I think to be consistent with the, consistent with the first plan we approved. If I'm not mistaken, the decommissioning plan language was included on, on the site plan. And, you know, the actual legal document Had to be reviewed by the planning board. Prior to Any building permits being, being issued. And if I'm not mistaken, that language was included on the site plan. I'm not so sure, that kind of sounds like the applicant wants to change that a little. You know, I want to be consistent going forward that we treat each applicant equally and kind of sounds like we're being asked to do something different than what we did on the first whole project.
I think for the decommissioning plan, we have no issue with that being final prior to issuance of a permit. I think that my response related to Nelson's reference to posting the financial surety. Prior to approval. So those are two different things.
Well, but we, the, the financial surety could be a condition of approval. But that be provided before permits are issued.
That's, that's typical.
Yep, that's what we see outlined in the technical review team final report that Kerry provided, which we are more than amenable to. Which is indicating that, you know, we would post this bond prior to building permit issuance.
John, does that Make you feel better?
I guess I'll, maybe, let me ask Pat Lyons. Our resident attorney, if he could chime in here. I mean, is, is this being handled somewhat similar to the Sunray solar? I'm, I'm afraid we're, we're doing things a little bit different, Patrick. What would be your opinion?
I think in the surety, it's fine. I think that is a condition of approval. You know, not needing necessarily the, the board needing to review that, just that The, you know, they can't, final approval, they can't commence construction until The surety, you know, that's provided. So, but John, your question is That the operations, maintenance and decommissioning bond must be reviewed and approved by the planning board prior to the issuance of any local permits. My, so is, is your concern, is that That that's inconsistent with the previous one, it seems?
Well, I'm a little concerned, I mean, on the other, the other one, I mean, we had A memo or Ed Bear appeared at one of the meetings. I mean, right now, I mean, I wasn't missing something. I don't see anything from Ed Bear as saying that he reviewed all this and, and finds it Approvable.
Well, I think what, I mean Why don't, so for that provision and the ability of applicants willing to adhere to the condition of approval that You know, that, that the, this will be reviewed and approved by the planning board prior to issuance, that would include Ed Bear either providing us You know, an opinion in that sense, or You know, appearing at a meeting where we, we, you know, review it together as a board. And I, I have no, I think that seems consistent With what you would have done before.
I mean, on, on the first one, we, we approved it pending Ed's approval. And that we would have to, each planning board, we approved the plan. But each member of the planning board would not sign the MYLAR until Each member got a chance to, to read Ed's review and review the decommissioning plan. And I think we're, we're in the same boat right here. Where it has not been reviewed by Ed, or at least nothing that he's provided to the board.
Well, I agree, well, I agree, John, so isn't that what we're, we're, the, the, the recommendation on the TRT and number three, I believe that That's what's been recommended and
And It may be worth mentioning as well, Ed has reviewed the decommissioning plan. And we've accepted the changes and recommendations he provided to us and agreed to them.
That's correct. I actually Yeah, that's correct. Ed has reviewed this. He reviewed the decommissioning plan and he has approved it. There were updates made to it. The final copy was provided with your packet and it was also emailed last week, so. You know, any, any revisions to it after this point that are made as a condition of the approval will be reviewed And approved by Ed prior to the MYLARS being signed and any construction permits being issued, just like we did last time, but Ed Bear did review this. We We have been in contact with him and if you look at the initial decommissioning plan that was submitted for the first, for the preliminary application, you will see that there have been revisions made between The copy that's included in your packet this month and the one that you received last month.
I mean, I will say that, I mean, the current applicant, I mean Has gotten Ed's approval A lot sooner than the prior applicant did. I mean, we were waiting a couple of months for, for that whole process to take place. But it seems like You're ahead of the, ahead of the ball there and then has done The decommissioning plan and got it approved by our, our city attorney, so, so I guess I'd be Okay with the way that it is right now.
Well, I think Kerry, Kerry's, you know, confirming that Ed's reviewed it. You know, and any minor revisions here today, being a condition of approval, I, I see is perfectly sufficient and consistent With the Town's code, so. I, I, I can't vote, but as an alternate, but I, I, I think it's my two senses, it satisfies the requirements of ordinance.
And I think it would be prudent in the, the future from Planet Review, is that any Correspondence from Ed Bear or whatever attorney Approves the decommissioning plan be quoted to the, to the planning board?
No, I think that's a good point, John. Forward, Kerry, if we can, the board can receive anything from Ed directly, I think that would be best practice. Even just a copy of an email.
Absolutely, yep, we can certainly do that.
I would just like to say to Patrick and Molly that Alternates are, have all the Rights and responsibilities of, of board members, except that you can't vote unless there's a board member absent or full board member. So don't hesitate to just jump in at any time. So where are we? What would the board like to do? Other than adjourn.
I'll take a crack at this motion. Uh, I'll take a crack at this motion. I move that we approve. And find complete the primary plan review for a major use site development entitled Ellsworth Solar Project for Ellsworth, Maine. One. L L C. The proposal to construct forty two point three acre solar energy facility on a one hundred and seven. Acre parcel located on the Bucksport Road tax map thirty eight lots, seven and eight. All subject properties located in the rural and drinking water zones. With. The caveat that the applicant. Addressed the four points. Uh, on the T R T report dated November twenty fourth, twenty twenty. And address language in the decommissioning plan regarding the methodology of post removal to clarify cutoff only if physically necessary. Or by D E P request. As well as include language uh indicating. Uh, acceptance for city staff to attend quarterly inspections. At least for the first two years. Uh, to observe metal growth.
And did you want to mention the uh bond?
Uh, that is item three on the T R T report. I assume if if it's okay, I would just submit the entire report. Uh, dated November twenty fourth and Carrie can copy all the language as written on that. I believe the applicant has previously indicated they're okay with all four points.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion, please? In that case, uh. I vote yes.
John Delio, yes.
Nelson?
Nelson, Gil, yes.
Rick?
I snuck a yes in there when you weren't listening.
Oh. And I needed, I need one alternate to vote.
Uh, yes.
Yes, I'm all agree, but.
Okay. Now we can go to the most important matter on the agenda here. Item nine is adjournment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we had a public hearing on that.
Excuse me?
I don't believe we had a public hearing on that.
Oh, on this last, on. Okay, does any member of the public wish to comment? Carrie?
I don't have any public comment.
Okay. So. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, all right. We are adjourned.